Let's pray. Well, God, gracious, Father, Lord, we come to you once again. God, thank you for the many blessings of life that were bestowed upon all of us, Lord. I just pray that you'll be with this body of commissioners as they meet to take on the business at hand. I pray, God, for those that will be serving in the months to come. Pray, God, that you'd always bless our county. Lord, I pray that you'd bless our nation. For it's your Son, Jesus Christ, name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Let us pray. Goodbye to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First is approval of manning for previous meeting.
Motion to approve, not approved yet.
Second. We got a motion by John Holt, second by Samantha, not approved yet, unapproved yet, in discussion. Throw it out.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Daniel Deal.
Yes.
Julie Eskenon.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pippinger.
Yes.
Samantha Tranpens.
Yes.
And James Witty.
Next is approval of court files.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion by John, second by Samantha, in discussion. Throw it out.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Daniel Deal.
Yes.
Julie Eskenon.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pippinger.
Yes.
Samantha Tranpens.
Yes.
And James Witty.
Next is approval of notaries. We got three. Teresa Hammond from Old Ford. Nan Kraus from Benton. And Kyle Swartford from Benton also.
Motion to approve all three.
Motion by John, second by Samantha, to approve notaries, in discussion. Throw it out.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Daniel Deal.
Yes.
Julie Eskenon.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pippinger.
Yes.
Samantha Tranpens.
Yes.
And James Witty.
Next is budget manning. I think we got four. The first budget manning is from, oh, flesh made for any survey training, an amount of a hundred dollars. It's coming out of line fifty-one, five-hundred, one ninety-six, and going to line fifty-one, five-hundred-three, thirty-six for training. Number two is Sheriff's Office. So that's the reserve funds for county buildings, an amount of a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, six-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars, ninety-one cents. Line number thirty-four, five-ten is coming from, it's going into the fifty-four, one-ten, dash, three-thirty-five. This is my order. It's, like, it's all grant money, wasn't it?
Well, that was from designated.
Where the designated?
Only for anything to do with.
It's already been, the Monday's there, correct? Forty-two or thirty-one.
Can't use for anything else.
Another one is, this is Sheriff's Office. Okay, here it is. This is Reginald Dean's office, moving forty-two hundred from the fund balance, which is line thirty-nine thousand, thirty-nine thousand. For two thousand seven hundred dollars, if the travel, one thousand five hundred is for Reginald Dean's travel. And it's going into line fifty-one, one-hundred-three, five, fifty-one, six-hundred-three, fifty-five. Okay, this is from the budget director. The amount is nine thousand, four hundred and ten dollars, from line thirty-nine thousand. Into line fifty-one, nine-hundred, dash, five-oh-two, it's for insurance for our county building. Anybody got anything else to say about the budget manning?
One of them broke through the, for training, correct, for the new commission.
Yep.
Which is required training.
Yep. For new elected commissioners, they do require.
That's fifteen hundred that's going into the budget line. That is budget line, so if it, when it's used up, that's, he's got the same time that everybody else has.
Right.
So, when it's gone, it's gone.
Motion to approve.
Seven.
Motion by John Holt, second by Davey, to approve budget manning, one, two, three, four, any more discussion? Throw it out.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Daniel Deal.
Yes.
Julie Eskenon.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pippinger.
Yes.
Samantha Tranpens.
Yes.
And James Witty.
Next is Grassley Creek Road report.
We live on Grassley Creek Road. My time frame is going to be off, so I, my daughter is going to say this. She couldn't be here, like, she's got her business, but. But approximately in June, we noticed that there was some activity going on, tract of land just directly across from my daughter's property. It also is on the river. According to the Tennessee Property Bureau.
There's more river.
According to Tennessee, so most of yous find out the property's in the flood plain. This property is clearly in the flood plain. Now, what the company, it's called Blue Ridge Only River LLC, which is actually a Georgia company. And checking a couple of weeks ago, they still haven't filed in Tennessee as a company. According to what we understand, is they're not supposed to do any work until they file with the Secretary of State. And anyway, they had proceeded to start clearing the property. A bunch of trees pushed over, cut up, burned, and this sort of. So we contacted TDEC and also TBA and Robbie and his office. But we felt we needed some help to find out what was going on. So come to find out, this company has not filed for any permits. And what we understand is, they weren't supposed to do any work in the flood plain without checking the TDEC and the TBA. And since it's supposed to be an RV park, they were supposed to file a plan of what the park was going to look like, how many sites, and things like that. Our concern is that, number one, we don't want to prevent businesses from coming to public county. But we are concerned that this is going to increase environmental law into the river. As you know, the river is a big tourist attraction. I don't know how much income, but according to what we've read, it's a pretty big source of income. So, we don't think this is a good idea. We don't, we haven't talked to, with Department of Transportation yet, because, as we understand it, this can't be a permanent RV site. In other words, these people who use it cannot stay more than six months. There's going to be substantial traffic in and out. So we don't know what this is going to do to the road system. Concerned about traffic, and we're concerned about noise pollution. Permanent RV sites are pretty nice and calm, transit numbers can be kind of rough. So, anyway, we just wanted to make everyone aware of what's going on. My daughter sent out some flyers to local folks in the neighborhood. TDEC did send them a notice that they were in violation. So, after they got the notice, they did do some additional work, but they have since stopped, haven't done any for the past few weeks. So we don't really, haven't had any feedback as to what's going on, if they've filed with TDEC or to go ahead and proceed. We have heard, TBA did come out and look at the site, but we haven't heard anything from them as to whether or not a plan has been filed. And then, we did talk to the planning commission in the county. Apparently, the planning commission doesn't get involved until kind of the final step of the process. So they are aware of the trouble, and as of the meeting a couple of weeks ago, they had not been contacted by the company. So our purpose was just to notify citizens in this area of what's going on, and solicit your support in being sure that, at the minimum, this company follows, follows all the rules and regulations that Tennessee has. So, thank you for your time.
So I just wanted to make a couple of comments to what you had said on the project. You are correct that, yeah, there was some work that was done in violation, they didn't have their permit. So I was looking for, you had submitted a complaint for, it doesn't really matter if this point of complaint was received. And we did stop work, we got notification from TDEC, we were violated for the erosion control and everything. So as of now, we are going through the process of getting all the permits for that, and I can tell you, it is very extensive. There are probably about five different permits that we have to get. And it's going to be a while, so we won't see any work there for quite a few months, probably. So we have an erosion control permit, we need to get one for some of the streams that are in there. We're looking at possibly a boat dock in the RV park as well, so we need a permit for that. But to try and alleviate some of the concerns, we are going through the process to get all the necessary permits with this thing. I did do some research with the commission as well a while back about approval for an RV park, and I didn't find anything. I found some sort of RV park slash mobile home park, but there was no, there was no resolution sign, so I kind of assume that the county does not have any jurisdiction on these things. But if there is, we can always talk about that. I have plenty of plans and things to leave, if anybody wants to see them. I can't speak to the T-Dot situation, as far as I know, T-Dot does not have any jurisdiction, it's not on a street right away. So, I can't speak to that, but I know that there is concern for Grassley Creek Road, which is a county road. I spoke to the county roadway department about driveway permits. Maybe there's something we have to talk about with the longevity of the pavement and the standing of its high traffic RVs. And my discussions with the landlord is this is going to be more of a short-term rental site, because, you know, public county, just the way I see it, public county is a tourist destination, there's a lot of activities that people do here, rafting, horseback riding, hiking, so it's really catering to that. And I appreciate your concern about, or your mention of not stopping business, because in my opinion, you know, just stepping aside from the project manager, this is going to be a great mission, I think, we're going to bring more money, people are going to come to town, to the restaurants, go to the bars, they're going to go rafting, they're going to go horseback riding. So I think it's really going to be a good improvement for small businesses and restaurants. I do have some photos, if anybody wants to see, I can bring them on a TV screen to show the level of quality that this is going to be. And if anybody is familiar with a brand-new RV park that just went in and eligible, just behind the wall, it's called Talona Ridge RV Park, and it is probably the nicest RV park I've ever seen. It is exceptional, just very, very high quality, and that's, that's what we're going for here, it's very, very high quality. This is not going to be a little riffraff RV park that's, you know, just bringing in forty-year-old RVs. If anybody is familiar with traveling to some of the newer RV parks, they typically have restrictions of no RVs ten years or older. So that's, that's going to be the same situation here, it's going to be more modern, upscale RV park with newer RVs. I do have a flyer, if anybody wants to take a look at Talona Ridge, they can kind of get an idea of what it's going to look like. But like I said, we are in the early stages of getting our permits, so I don't have any building renderings yet, or anything to really show what it's going to look like. I have a site plan, I can also bring them up on the screen if anybody wants to see that, I have photos. And if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
What does the subject system mean?
It's, I have to get a special permit for that, but there will be.
It's a flood plain, you're going to be installed in it.
It will be out of.
It will be out of the available.
Yes, sir. Yep. And that also has to be approved by TDEC as well, so there's a special permit for that.
You said you didn't find any regulations for.
Then you still have a rate for mobile home RV parks.
Have I turned these? I remember the plan under change hands, and it had never been deemed off of the plan, and then one would all of them, you know.
Our, our planning commission will still have to approve by before, even after, even after you get all your permits, the planning commission will still have to approve before we can proceed. They can't plan it.
There are regulations. And you are aware of the Home Demoprotexit for the Black Dog Park?
I did not, but I can translate that to the owner.
You need to make sure and check the county's full name.
I wish. With the TBA, if there's one, it's a, whatever it is, they have some very strict rules about what is to be done, how long the person, how long it's stayed. The subject system has to be placed, water type. And I did, I did, so there are a lot of regulations.
How many acres, how many pads?
Right now, it's seventy-eight RV sites and ten cabins.
I'm sorry?
Seventy-eight RV sites and ten cabins, small, little, three hundred square.
How many acres?
The property is approximately nine acres. Well, you know, I can give a little bit of the story. I had called several people with the county, and I remember I had spoken to the woman in Old Ford about the regulations that are on the county website, you know, the form tab, and at the very bottom, there's the regulations for mobile homes and RV parks. But again, it's not, it's not signed, there's no resolution number, so I assume it's not anything.
No, if it's on the county website, it's where it's been scanned, it isn't a fake, it's the same one that they use every time that you check with anybody.
Yes, I called the woman to work in the county, not, not on the commission, I told the woman in Old Ford, then she said, there's nothing.
You called me. I called the county manager.
Okay, that's where I started. That's where I started.
That's good. You should have stopped. Because you were in violation of the regs, and the regs, whether the burden that's on their side or off, yes, that is. A little bit of all of it.
Okay, but she told me there's nothing, I would have made a permit.
You went on site, you see that there were there.
Why wouldn't you? Because the resolution was not signed, and that goes back to the.
The resolution that signed, it goes in by statute, that's state law.
I mean, my four-year-old used to tell me, officer lived on it, but I thought it was, they wouldn't. Where are you drawing your freshwater crop?
Uh, well.
You gonna have a treatment plant for that?
Uh, I don't believe you need one. How are you going to prevent a fire if one of those campers catch on fire, and you've got seventy-eight crowded in there? How are you going to prevent a widespread fire in France? We have not designed the water system yet, but there's a plan to have hypersol.
Well, I'm not, for me, hundred percent to me, the regulations, I'm certain that seventy-eight won't fill out on that eight.
Oh, that would be interesting. I've read through the regulations, and it's thirty-five hundred square feet per site, and right now, we're about twelve hundred square feet per site. So I, I understand the regulations.
It will have to come before the planning commission, I mean, to make it legal. And we would never approve anything without permits, you know, they got in trouble with that, a month ago, years ago. And ever since that, we have, we have a state planner, we, the county actually pays them a little bit, they guide us along, and we, you know, we watch everything. We're not going to approve nothing that shouldn't be approved.
Above the theme.
And they gotta have the permits, you know, without that, it can't be done.
One reason my daughter was so concerned is that Barker Creek crosses her property, goes under the road and into the river. On the flat of her property, there's a, we call it pond, it turns out it's a backwater off of the river. And it's right where the river turns, so anything that gets dumped in that river will come into that backwater. So that's why we're, we're concerned about. Another thing I do, the most useful place it is, which is do that oil, gas, trash, we pay up, that particular RV park. It's going to end up in that backwater. And on the flat, it says that we can't do anything, because TBA controls fourteen forty elevation. Guess what the elevation of Grassley Creek Road is? Fourteen forty. This thing is not only in the flood plain, it's also going to be in TBA's.
I live on that road, I live on the old Grassley Creek, I travel it every day. And Johnny would tell you too, that's why I see the river up to it, you know, in cabins, if they, you know, when they go to cabin, they're going to have the basement up, but.
Yeah, and that's, that's, last year, when we got the heavy rains, the property was flooded.
Um, so I know that, like, I have rail properties and, like, I have, I did temporary or short-term rails for a while, they had to take the trash with them. How is that going to work with an RV park? Because obviously.
They'll be responsible for it, because the trash won't be generated from public county residents, and our rules say, we'll only take trash from public county residents.
Right, so in your planning, you got to also figure out how you're going to get the dumpsters done, keep doing that kind of thing.
Yeah, that's the one that I've not worked out. Primary focus right now is permits for TDEC, and that was our biggest hurdle. So we, you know, some of the things you're talking about, those are concerns, but we have not got that much.
Having worked with FEMA for years, if it is in the flood plain, what is the plans to elevate the RVs, even though they're temporary, it will be in the flood plain?
Uh, there are plans to fill it, but I don't think that, I have not prepared a grading plan yet, but.
Filling, filling, as I understand it, from a different state, but filling is not allowed in a, in a flood area. You're still in a flood area, whether you elevate it or not. So if you're looking at a ten-foot difference, if a cabin has to be elevated, I mean, your RV's going to have to be elevated to the same degree, and I don't see how that will happen.
That's something we're still working on, we've not got that far yet.
Anybody else got anything on RV park? Moving on, we got top railings, we make some trends.
Buddy, would you like to see a top there?
To, you know, I made this presentation a couple of times, I'll be glad to do it again, and we can go, with questions and discussion, whatever the commissioner desires.
Uh, there might be a lot of people here that don't know.
Okay. We'll be, it's on this TV screen, right here. I'd send another flag to introduce some people I have with me, Karen Spires, City of Chattanooga, she's the manager. I'm the inter-director of the Martinian Environmental Campus, City of Chattanooga. Dave Turner is a retired TDEC mining specialist and work quality specialist, and he consults with us on everything we do on the property. There's, we're supposed to be, like, several people from TDEC on the call, but I don't think, have they called in?
No, not yet.
Okay.
That makes, that makes sense.
So, anyway, I guess one of the most important things is there seems to be a lot of misinformation about, you know, the purpose of this meeting. Lots of people think that this is part of the permit process that we're doing with TDEC for the composting facility, and that's not the case. This is just a commission meeting, and we're making a presentation. That public hearing would be after we've committed, there's two parts to the compost permit. One, I've completed and it's been approved. The second part is, I have to fill out a lot of detailed information about how we actually will do the composting. We haven't submitted that yet. Once we submit that, I think there'll be a thirty or forty-five day public comment time, and then TDEC will decide whether or not they're going to have a hearing, a hearing or not. So, let me just go through this right quick, and if we can wait to the end for questions, that way I think I can get through it pretty fast. And like I said, Karen's here to answer questions on bio solids and Dave on water quality, and then I'll answer, try to answer anything else. I think the first thing that's important to know is what bio solids are not. Bio solids are not raw sewage. You know, bio solids are not untreated sewage. Bio solids are not hazardous waste. What bio solids are, in this particular case, for the city of Chattanooga, is fertilizer. The Tennessee Department of Agriculture has certified that Chattanooga bio solids as a ten-ten-ten equivalent fertilizer. So, there's a brochure that we have that I passed out to other meetings, I got some here, that's an EPA document on bio solids. What they are, and one of the, one of the important things in this pamphlet says that bio solids do contain odor, and we all know that. But the odor is not harmful, you know, to human heads. Now, you know, we will address, I will address the odor situation here, I don't want to. But, you know, that's in the brochure that EPA put out, that's not something I put out, okay? So, uh, it is classified as a fertilizer, not a waste, not anything else, but a fertilizer. This is a picture of us spreading the bio solids. Uh, I had to buy a tractor and a spreader, uh, you know, and to, to answer a couple other questions. I received no money from the EPA, State of Tennessee, TDEC, City of Chattanooga. Uh, I don't sell material, it's only allowed, but my permit I operate on only allows me to use it on intertrade holdings property, which is two thousand acres, a portion of the old Tennessee Copper Company, all right? So, it's only used there, haven't been used anywhere else. And we have a permit that allows us to do that. Well, the permit basically belongs to the City of Chattanooga. And then, I'm a designated location. TDEC has approved this, several offices in TDEC has approved it, EPA has approved it. The, the EPA remediation officer for the river, uh, his name is Craig Ziller. He's been working up here for many years. He is responsible for the remediation of the river, all right? He's the one that approved this property for EPA. So, he had absolutely no concerns based on the way our water, uh, stormwater systems work, that it would have a negative impact on the river. This is right here is the reason why we even went to bio solids in the first place. This is an old dump that's on the property that had never had any vegetation on it for, I don't know how many years. I've been up here since two thousand eight, you know, it was a morse tape. We spent about five hundred thousand dollars reclaiming these. Uh, part of my requirement with EPA is that I have to reclaim all the waste areas on the site. We went in, we graded, we, we lined, we fertilized, we vegetated. The vegetation came up and after about a week died off, all right? I called Dave Turner, who was working for TDEC at the time, and Lofton Carr, the EPA remediation officer. They came up, looked around, and Lofton said to Dave, "The only thing that's gonna solve this problem is bio solids." All right? Dave took the lead on that, he arranged with Karen to get, I mean, I had nothing to do with it, basically, except saying, "I'm willing to try." All right? They brought, they brought it in because I had, still had the requirement to remediate the site, that particular, uh, dump area, which was about fifteen acres, maybe twenty. All right, so, we tried the bio solids, nothing but bio solids after that. And maybe I can go to the next one? Maybe not. Well, we've had a little technical difficulty. Give me just a second. And let's, all right, that's what it looked like after we applied the bio solids. I didn't apply, apply any more fertilizer, I didn't apply any more lime, I didn't do anything else except cut bio solids in and seed it and, um, and see what happened. And that's been, three or four years ago, it, it, my requirement is to maintain bit, permanent vegetative cover. And that's what we got there and the EPA signed off on that. There were several other sites, exactly the same way, I'm just gonna go through them right quick. That's a smelter area before bio solids, we had a failure there too. That's the area after bio solids. Uh, that's a, a dump, that's, that's after bio solids. So, you know, the, the point here is that bio solids, because there's a lack of topsoil and it was a very acidic, you know, environment, that's about what worked. It was recommended by TDEC and EPA. Uh, we got a permit through TDEC, or a land application designation through Karen's permit. And I understand, and we'll talk about that in a minute, odors, we had, we, we did start spreading it all over the place there at the plant because here again, all it was growing was cud zoa. And we were trying to build up the soil so we could get, you know, some, some cover. I, I made a mistake getting it too close to Copper Hill, created an odor problem. And, uh, you know, we met with the city council of Copper Hill. And, you know, I made a commitment not to spread it, uh, close to Copper Hill. And we agreed to move our operations sort of to the middle to just to try to keep even the trucks away from downtown Copper Hill. So, no trucks come in the main gate anymore, we don't spread, uh, we don't apply, we don't do anything, you know, that might jeopardize the downtown tourism in Copper Hill. All right, so, once that, um, uh, back in the beginning of the year, uh, I'm having a little bit of trouble here, excuse me just a minute. Back in the beginning of the year, uh, we, when Highway Five came through and the Tri-State Shield pile had to be moved because it was in the, you know, I agreed to take it. I think Dave said this would be great addition to, and will improve your bio solids if you compost it. And, um, and it'll help with the smell, it will give you twice as much material, and you'll get a better material. So, we started doing that. We just took wood chips from, uh, anywhere, the tree trimmers, a real tree, I guess, that was working for Tri-State. We mixed them, made windrows, that's a windrow, which you can see right there. Absolutely, well, I'm gonna say negligible odor around them windrows. And, uh, it begs, uh, the, the composting requirement from TDEC, if it's sold commercially. Now, used on my property, I've just got the permit to do this. You know, I can blend it, take it the next day, I can do anything on the site. But if I'm gonna market the, uh, compost, I have to meet certain requirements. One of them is that the windrows maintain an internal temperature of a hundred and forty degrees Fahrenheit for, wait a minute. Thirty, thirty days, I think, some, some, you know, some number, some number of, uh, minimum number of time, all right? I'm sorry?
Go ahead.
And I think that that's, uh, you know, and that is to kill any existing pathogens that might be in, or would be in, the Class B compost, uh, the Class B bio solids. What I get from Chattanooga is Class B bio solids, there's two classes, A and B. A is unrestricted, there's no restrictions on it, uh, it can be used and sold equator. Class B, it requires a length of time for pathogens to deteriorate, basically. But composting, you know, ensures that you're gonna, uh, take care of the pathogens that are within the windrow. You know, one of the, this, this particular shop is on Channel Three News. And I had several people think that that was fumes, you know, bio solids fumes, it's making everybody sick. And that is, uh, water vapor, it's stained, so, it's nothing but water. Because the internal temperature of the, uh, pile is, is a hundred and forty degrees. And when you turn it, it's, the tip, the outside temperature isn't gonna be there, and it creates a vapor. And that's what that is, that's just a water vapor. As part of, what you have to do is you have to turn the windrows every few days because windrows require oxygen and moisture and carbon and nitrogen. That's the four things it requires to work. And you have to turn the windrows to get the oxygen to the microorganisms. And that's the finished product, that's compost. It, I have a sample of it over here, it looks just like potting soil. It doesn't smell, it doesn't, you know, uh, it's pathogen-free, uh, it's, uh, you know, it's, it's a great soil amendment. And a lot of the property and the people that, you know, that work in that project, you know, can attest how much difference any of them, from fescue to the trees, to anything else, the difference that that potting soil, I'll call it, that soil makes. Because probably like you, there's no topsoil in Copper, at, at Copper Hill Industries. You know, we're having to make our own.
So, Buddy, can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am, but let's, let me finish up right quick, I'm just about through. Now, you know, odor control is a very important.
Yes.
Very important thing to me, you know, and to everybody else. And, you know, the commitment we make is that, you know, we're gonna confine the odor to the property by doing certain things. Only working it in the wintertime when the humidity's low, the temperature's low, you know, wind speed, monitoring wind speed. And what we found in doing research and talking to, I have another consultant whose name is Glenn. I'm sorry.
Downing.
Downing. He works for Denali Water Systems. Uh, they are in the treat, water treatment business, the solid, uh, I mean, the bio solids business. And he's given us some pointers like, take your compost, mix it in with the bio solids when they get there, mix your chips in immediately, and it will, you know, go a long way to preventing any of the odors, and most likely will prevent the odors, from even getting anywhere close to the property. And then, the other thing is, you know, and we've tried to do this, is inform you that, you know, what we're doing, you know, it's not gonna be a dump, it's not gonna be a landfill, you know, it is a soil amendment that really helps us soil. And, and it doesn't create any negative consequences other than the odor, which I have addressed and, you know, will address. And the future, what we, the reason why we requested a compost permit. You know, I was satisfied, really, to just use it on the property. But several of my employees who are farmers came to me and said, "I want this stuff on my pasture." And I said, "You can't get it, it's restricted." In discussions with TDEC, Dave, Denali, you know, they said, "But if you compost it, you'll make it a Class A bio solid, which is unrestricted, and you can do just like, uh, the city of Milwaukee, Wisconsin is doing." They're bagging their sewage, their bio solids, after it goes through a treatment process, and they're selling it. You can, we bought that bag at Tractor Supply in Blue Beach, and it's bio solids. It's Class A bio solids. They generate eleven million dollars a year in revenue, they have about twenty or thirty people who work in their project. And, um, they cannot even, I think you told me, the public relations officer for the, City of Milwaukee said that they, they fill about forty percent of the odor, odors they get a year. So, you know, this is what we thought, that if we got a composting permit, we could probably create maybe ten jobs or so, you know, uh, in the beginning, and, you know, generate a million dollars or more in revenue. I don't know what the tax consequences of that would be. But, you know, Copper Hill Industries pays, you know, operators, uh, senior operators twenty to thirty dollars an hour. There's benefits, you know, there's, uh, holiday pay and retirement and insurance and all the perks that go with a good job. And we thought this, you know, would be beneficial. And so, that's the reason why I did that, because the permit doesn't have any effect on my composting or land-applying bio solids on the intertrade property. That, that, that don't have anything to do with it. What this permit is for is if we can make Class A bio solids and then market them. And, uh, I just wanna say this, there is the office number, if anybody, you know, uh, has any questions, any time any odor is detected, I would love for you to call the number, report it, and we'll try to verify and see what, you know, happened, what caused that, and what we need to do for it.
So, regardless of the dispermit that you're working on right now.
Right.
The operations that you're currently doing will still continue, correct?
That's correct. As long as we have that permit.
Yes.
Designated site that the City of Chattanooga puts their ton.
What else, let me ask you this, that's nineteen hundred acres of land over there, what else could you do with that thing?
Well, it's, it's unrestricted except for residential development.
I mean, there, there is basically, you, you can't really put much on there, right? Because of the soil composition and the, the waste and all that stuff.
Let's, let's clarify this, it's restricted, it's a super fun site, it's got a subsidence series in, there's, it was a headly mine, underground mine. It's a very dangerous place.
Right.
Don't walk onto this place without.
That's, my point being that there really ain't much else you can do with it, right?
No, you, really, you, there's not a whole lot you can do with this thing, other than you can grow some, some grasses on, on the areas of that, that we grow. Timber and timber. In certain areas, yeah, but not all of it.
But why did you cut all the timber off of it that was on it?
Well, I didn't cut it all, I've only cut two hundred out of two thousand acres.
You cut more than that?
I got paid for two hundred acres anyway. That's what the law teaches. But, uh, you know, that timber belongs to me.
Well, I love that if you're wanting to grow it, why don't you triple ten, fertilize and keep your tree down?
Well, the trees don't have anything to do with the bio solids. You know, the, the tree, I have a certified forester who comes in every year and makes recommendations to me on what to do with the timber. That timber is at its end of its life cycle. He said it was gonna die whether I cut it or not, you know, you know, 'cause it was, and we were having a lot of trees die. And so, and the only reason that portion you saw has been clear cut is because it was in festival cud zoa. And in order to be able to maintain a, you know, a beneficial timber mark, I mean, timber farm, you gotta get rid of the cud zoa.
You're not.
So, I then would follow a certified forester's recommendations.
What were your future plans for that particular area, are you gonna re, replant that?
Oh, yeah, sure, we'll, what we have to do, we have to leave it, let it lay a year. It has to be burned, then it has to be sprayed, and then it's replanted.
How many tons?
Ma'am, let us go, ma'am, go, she asked.
I think he just got my question.
Okay.
He's starting to ask.
My, my question is, are there two different permits we're talking about? I wanna make sure everybody's clear on this, I wanna make sure on this. There is, if you obtain a second permit, the quantity is drastically, technically, drastically different.
I'm, I'm, I'm not saying, that's, that's an assumption. Well, that's a question, it could be. It could be, it could be.
It allows you to.
But it is up to the City of Chattanooga to determine, you know, let me say this, sorry, when we, when we first asked for bio solids, the City of Chattanooga hired a soil scientist to come in and evaluate our soil and make a recommendation on how many tons per acre per year that we ought to apply.
And how much is that? Could you say that?
The recommendation from a soil scientist was eighty tons an acre per year.
How does Chattanooga decide what Pope County's gonna do?
Wait, wait just a minute now, all right, so.
How much are you getting in there right now?
We have never taken in more than ten thousand tons in a year, eleven thousand tons in a year.
What's that?
We've been doing this for four, forty-five months, it's December twelfth of eighteen.
So when did eleven thousand tons come in?
Last year.
Last year, okay, so now you're talking about increasing it to eighty thousand tons.
I didn't say, I didn't say.
That was a top out, wait, I just heard him say that.
I said, the soil scientist recommended up to eighty tons per acre per year.
Per acre?
How many acres? On seventeen hundred acres.
But.
That's a lot of crap.
That's, that's for your current usage.
I can't handle that.
That's for doing what you're doing now. But if you're wanting to start marketing it.
You're going to increase it.
Then you're going to have to increase that number, or you won't have enough to market.
If, if, if the marketing plan works out, you know, if we're able to make, which nobody's, we haven't been able to do that yet, but if we're able to make a Class A, you know, we would bring it in, make the Class A, bag it, and sell it.
Correct, and how much are you anticipating to make that one million dollars that you're talking about a year?
That's based on about twenty thousand tons.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's based on about twenty thousand tons a year.
How many fly eggs could be in a son of compost? How many fly eggs are going to come in?
Well, that's a good point, now let me say this.
Those flies are going to be all of them.
Let's, let's, let me say this, the bio solids do attract flies, okay?
They attract birds as well.
Where are bio solids coming from?
No, it attracts birds too. And, but I want you to know that I've been in contact with the FAA. And they said if it, if it contracted too many birds and we had an airplane that was coming in and out, you know, they can sue us and you. Does the county really want to take that lawsuit? Do you want to take that, yes? And my question, and I have another question.
There's a lawsuit in life too, possibly.
Well, I mean, we have a spread of bio solids within five hundred yards of there.
But it's going to contract birds. You know how close we are to that? I, I mean, we're really close to it because I can smell it at my house. And it's literally in our backyard. But I have a question for you two before everybody gets caught. If this was really about vegetation and growing it back, why do you want to bag it and sell it?
Okay, what I said, you know what, I had no intentions of doing that until, like I said, employees came to me and said, "Well, I want to be able to use this, we need this in this area." Now, you know, if it's beneficial and helpful and generates jobs and revenue, tax revenues.
But you're bringing in ten jobs.
Huh?
You're bringing in ten jobs.
I said at the beginning.
But we're a tourist town, and does everybody want to be known as us bagging compost here?
No.
Probably those ten people making twenty dollars an hour.
I have a question.
No, 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 it's a good question.
Yes ma'am.
I was reading an article, and I don't know if this is a, a natural research article about bio solids. And it says, "For some reason, federal bio solid regulations do not regulate odors. Is that true?"
It's true.
So there's no, nothing's bothered by.
TD is not regulating odors.
Okay, and another, and this is something else I read by the EPA, Bio Solids Technology Fact Sheet. It says, "Site suitability is also influenced by the character of this surrounding area. While odors and truck, truck traffic may not be objectionable in agricultural area, both will adversely impact residential development. And we said in posted fields where bio solids are applied." And when I read that, and I barely knew this area, I, well, we lived in Nashville a long, long time. Um, I thought about everything I've seen happen in McCaseville. And, you know, it's becoming a booming place, with train comes and businesses coming. Ten jobs is nothing compared to the potential that McCaseville has to do with tourism. I am thinking, I mean, I, I'm not against you, I'm just thinking about the community and why we chose to live here, and is this the right thing for this area? It should be in a rural area. My son, son, well, works for a utility company. He said they put these places in rural areas, they don't put them where there is residential communities. And I think that's an issue. There are some benefits.
I've, I've lived here all my, my kids go school here. And, uh, you know, I, I obviously don't want anything that's going to be harmful to our community. And I, I, I'm, I'm, I want local businesses to do well, but think about the kind of business that we've been getting and look at the kind of crowd that's been coming around our town lately. Um, I don't think that just welcoming all businesses is really necessarily a beneficial thing either when it comes to the tourist thing. I've seen more people strung out on drugs, I've seen people sleeping in parking lots. Um, so, I mean, I, I, as a person who's grown up here and not used to seeing that kind of stuff around here, um, you know, I, I don't think that having the industry that provides good paying jobs and, and allows businessmen to make a dollar, I don't think we can hold that against him. I mean, the man spent hundreds of thousands over there trying to reclaim land. I don't see that there's any harm in him figuring out a way to make a profit off of it. Um, I mean, I, I just think, I think that's something to consider, you know. How many bars have we got within a, a one mile area right here in Copper Hill?
Ten.
Yeah? Don't get me wrong, I don't have a problem with drinking. But is that the kind of tourism you really want?
Yes.
Is, do you want to go into that?
It brings people in. It brings people in.
And not, and not all of it. It's part of what goes on in a tourist town. How long does it take, buddy, I asked you this the other day. How many times do we have to smash?
Order, order.
Hey, I'm not trying to be arrogant, but everything needs to go through us. Just raise your hand.
All right.
I mean, I'm not trying to be arrogant, no, I'm not, we got a few orders too. Uh, I'm going to start from the left and work my way to the right.
My main question right now, is the water contamination. You're talking about having, how many tons right now that you're having?
Eleven thousand.
And you're going to be raising it to eighty thousand?
I didn't say that.
They're about, they're about, they're possible. How is your possibility? What was said then? What did I miss, part of that?
I said, the soil scientist recommended eighty tons per acre per year.
So your recommendations for the building site is eighty tons per acre?
The soil scientist.
So their recommendation to you is eighty tons per acre? If you want to have that done, as a soil professional, those are you have to, or should, what are you going to do to control the water runoff into the river? Now, we all, we all turn the weapon now, it's questionable.
Let's go, T D.
Okay.
All right, so, right now, right now, the mine water property, Berry Mine, Coway Mine, Boyd Central, Cherokee, all the Isabella, they're all controlled by Congress. Okay? If you do not pump water from these mines, the water in the Accoy River will be degraded in a very short time. All the work that we've done, we've done a tremendous amount of work in this, in this area. And we spent a lot of money, and we spent a lot of sweat equity into this. But, the thing that you got to consider is this, that water in those mines is some of the worst water quality in the world. Okay? If you do not pump this, then it's going to degrade the river, period. There's, it's, that's why we have to have chemical treatment plants.
Yeah, but you're adding more.
Well, let me finish, let me finish. There is, the, what, the bio solids is land applied, and that's what we're talking about. Land application. The compost is in one area. All those are controlled, okay? These are all controlled, and that's stormwater is what we're talking about.
Percolation.
It does not percolate.
It doesn't go downhill?
If it percolates into, into the soil, it gets into the mine water, it, there is no effect. None. Because first of all, this acid is so strong that's in these mines, it will kill any living creature. It'll kill anything that you're talking about here, you're talking about pathogens percolating down into this. There's no way, it's not going to occur. Because if it does, it goes into these mines, it goes into the mine, mine water, then it's going to, that condition in the mine water will kill that bacteria. Well, here's, here's a, here's a, here's a great example.
Why does that water pump into those damn trees?
It's not.
I tell you, the pipe comes out.
Let me tell you, we don't want to talk about, we don't, there is no pumping of water into any of these trees.
What about the stormwater?
That water, that's a dam. We're going to talk about the stormwater. Answer, answer. That, that dam was built to take the good water from Bell Town.
Diverted.
Diverted around the bad water that goes to the treatment plant.
Right.
And it goes directly to the river.
I've been letting water coming out of the pipes that are going into the. Your first water is stupid, it's out.
The water flows through a five foot, high density, high density polyethylene pipe. This pipe was so big, it had to be brought in by, this was EPA's concept. And the, and the whole thing about our, the work that was done here is that Accoy River, that's all, that's our main focus while we were here. And we're still here. I'm not, but they are. It's the Accoy River. And, and the Accoy River is, is in better shape than it's been in a hundred and fifty years or more. This thing has been polluted for a long, long time. And it's not going to get, it is, this activity, this, the maximum amount of like, eleven thousand tons of material has nothing, it is nothing compared to the, to the river. That's over a year's period. That's what you have to consider too. It's not eleven thousand tons just brought in right there.
It's, it's what's going to be coming out.
No, it's not, it's not.
That is exactly what we want.
Well, I mean, you can, you can worry about, you're not worried, you're not worrying about anything that you need to worry about. But it's not going to happen.
I mean, all of us around here have seen out range around.
Well, I understand.
We got to swing this up, bro, we got time, man.
Okay. Okay, sir.
Okay, yeah, yeah, sir, so, we're talking a lot about water quality, but I would like to see by a raise of hands, how many people in this room, the number one concern is odors coming from, especially from increasing the, the, the amount of sewage, and then, uh, what the fact that it's going to have on our businesses in downtown Dopperdale, the K'sville, Dopper, uh, Dopper.
Absolutely.
So the water might be clean, but it's going to smell bad to be on.
No.
Okay, well, I mean, I can, I, I would, I would tell you that it's not good.
But can you guarantee that to me?
Before it smells?
It's not great. They're going to be independent, thank you, on water.
You're an independent citizen, eh?
I know, but they can do more when they, they, they.
Yeah.
I found this one, it's actually about our government, uh, the, uh, Accoy News. It says sewage sludge repackaged garden fertilizer test is positive for toxic chemicals. It has went through all of those testing and more, this country in Michigan. They can't, they can't do that.
State of Maine banned. Did you read that part?
Yeah, the bio solids, they're tested to find out if a lot of thrower chemicals tied to it. But you organize.
It does, it's present in your, your food and your water. And, I mean, it's a, it's a commitment to the base. Often, you, you know, it's one year of the process.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
My name's Martha Temple, and I live in Copper Hill. And I know that this takes under two minutes, because that's what I was said, I could say it for two minutes. These are all comments from Sierra Club spokesman and from The Guardian newspaper. Uh, they've all are from twenty nineteen to twenty two, twenty twenty-two, so they're current. By some estimates, Americans send about three hundred million pounds of feces daily from the nation's toilets to wastewater treatment plants. While the water is cleaned and discharged, the remaining toxic sewage sludge stays at the treatment plant. And it's what Sierra Club Environmentalist Nancy Rains calls, quote, "The most pollutant-rich man-made substance on earth." This, that's in the quote. This is from the EPA then. More than seven hundred pollutants have been found in current bio solids since EPA began tracking their occurrence in nineteen ninety-three. Class A fertilizers have no pathogens or viruses, they are clean. But the chemicals remain, the chemicals are not removed. Class B fertilizer, which is what I understand they're using now, may have pathogens and, as well as chemicals, and will need degradation from the sun before crops can be harvested or animals can graze. And I was a sheep farmer, and I would not use Class B fertilizer on my fields, nor would I use Class A bio solids. A university in North Carolina study found seventy-five percent of people living near farms that spread bio solids experience health issues like burning eyes, nausea, vomiting, boils, and rashes, while others have been trapped in MRSA, a penicillin-resistant superbug. In South Carolina, sludge containing high levels of carcinogenic PCBs was spread on dropland. And in Georgia, sludge killed cows. Bio solids are also thought to be with non, as far as possible, for toxic algae blooms in the Great Lakes and Florida. And bio solid treatment centers regularly pollute the air around them. Uh, nothing that is done to the sludge removes the chemicals, Rains said, that's the environmentalist. They just spend a little money on PR to convince us it's nice fertilizer and fail to mention all the other things that are in it. And, and as an aside, if you look at the fertilizer you buy for your own, uh, yard or for your own plants, if it says bio solids or residuals or municipal waste, um, you're using bio solids. Thank you.
No more. And then we're going to go on to the reg and late, to make sure we get it done, and then we'll come back to this at the time we got later. Go ahead.
Yeah. My question for Karen, how do you measure pharmaceuticals in that much weight? Can you do it? You can't measure pharmaceuticals. Sixty percent of thousands are taken.
Sixty percent of municipality water has pharmaceuticals in detectable amounts in this country.
But it's not going to surprise you if you don't make.
It's in your drink. Sixty percent.
We don't need, we don't need all of these.
Here's a past mayor.
I can't lay claim to not being from around here. Born in Duck Town. I lived here a good amount of my life, on a retired electrical. I was born at Inza Grand Hospital in Duck Town. My mother was a McKay. We're a little bit of feet, can I say? Again, I'm a retired electrical engineer, I don't, I work around a lot of settling agents. And I listened to them all I could. My best buddy, I went to Denver State High School and College, the University of Tennessee. And I called him and asked him about this, and I thought he was going to jump through the telephone. He said that is the worst idea I've ever heard of. Now, I was very, very cognizant when I was working. Uh, wastewater treatment sludge is a very, very, very big problem. Water treatment sludge is a very big problem, because I had to deal with it. I was a city councilman in Acacia for eighty years. And because of the compounds we use in it, it's called a process called flocculation, where the particles stick to each other so they sink, so you get rid of them. It became a hazardous waste, and we had to dry it, get it to a certified landfill in oil ground, Georgia. And it cost us bloody fortune to do that. And that is a vein of water plants all over the country. And it's a very big vein of wastewater plants, much worse than wastewater treatment plants. Everybody likes to talk about pathogens, everybody likes to talk about the river. But the big problem, bio solids contain a lot of stuff, animal and poultry, manures, composting, and whatever. But they also contain poly and parafluor, alcohol, PFAS, things, chemical things. And a lot of this is from firefighter foam that's used, or degreaser, or whatever. And those things don't, do not go away. And people don't like to talk about it, but this stuff is in wastewater sludge. And people don't like to talk about it, but this stuff is in wastewater sludge. Now, I can well understand why the Chattanooga people are kinda quiet. If I ran Chattanooga, I'd be absolutely turning back this with joy, that I could manage to ship our crap somewhere else. If somebody's doing this voluntarily, then I, I used to own some property in Florida, I like to talk to you about, you might like to own it. I think, I think this is a very, very bad idea for us. McKayville has just managed to finally get a quarter of its pool, and we have a thriving tourist situation, we have a, a healthy climate with our friends and copper, I look out my kitchen window and see Copper Hill.
Cost us about eighty thousand dollars to ship our solid.
Yeah, eighty thousand bucks.
We could give it to them.
And to, to insinuate that this is not going to harm is just not true. Everybody wants to talk about the pathogens, everybody wants to talk about, and odor, for us, our odor is a big deal, because I don't think we can see people sitting out on the decks of Copper Hill spending money that it doesn't smell good. And the people here that I sit in my house and want to get off that train, go down there and they go to the bars and they go to the restaurants, they spend money, and that's the kind of life you're out of this community right now. We're hoping to get some other things, but again, my civil engineering buddies, professional contacts I have, think this is an absolutely awful idea, and I think.
I was the commissioner of prisons in Tennessee over all the prisons. We started a recycle program, such as heat tubing up in Brushy Mountain, to try to see if there's any way we can make a profit out of using prison lakes. Anybody tells you this stuff don't stink, I got news for you. It does, in fact, all those men are right in Brushy Mountain because of the breeze bringing that stuff into the prison over there. The other thing is she brought up, and she's right, birds just cover that stuff up. Every time they turn, those furrows he's talking about, here they come, and it's just about a thousand, it's not just a few. If we hadn't been up in the middle of nowhere in that prison, we couldn't have done it. I mean, just no way anybody would talk about it.
Well, that's a concern of mine, when you said county, wow.
Yeah, look at that. You would bring sludge or crap down the railroad, the most dangerous road in the country, and take a chance on jumping over it. Of all places, you bring.
Mr. Chairman. Bradley County, uh, commission voted a couple nights ago, or even whatever time they had to meet, not to accept any more solids, all this stuff, into their county. They have, they deal with their own, and that's it. But if Chattanooga is, you know, pay, gonna pay these gentlemen millions of dollars to get rid of their trash, to bring it to, up here for us to deal with later on, we don't know what's gonna happen later on. And if it's gonna be so good, instead of paying to haul it and all that, why don't they keep it down there and do it from their town?
One more thing, one more thing. The entire, the entire state of Maine has prohibited it at all, none, zero, because they have a senior type situation with, they depict their tourist center, up there it's cold.
There used to be a leading state recommending like that, or they banned.
I'm just trying to help the kids, okay, the school across the street from the mine. There's a school, there's one, there's road, there's a mine. The kids are there from seven thirty in the morning, almost eight thirty at night, I know by there. Who know if it's at the stake, parents aren't gonna allow the kids to be outside, those kids are gonna get the PE, the band is out there every day, all the activities are out there every day, where are their kids gonna go? They got to be inside. Also, the, the football games are a big thing, graduation, no one's gonna wanna sit up there with, you know, that smell. Mr. Chairman.
We're gonna move on to our agenda, we're coming back to business. We gotta get our business. We gotta get our. Name of the agenda is, oh, four fire hall. Hey, guys, good seats. Look out there, yeah, look out.
Next message from Representative U.C., they said that the state would be announcing the grants on August twenty ninth, that's all we know.
Next is the, please, y'all, go for it, while we're down there.
That's in your packet of what happened, just to talk, take out all the facilities, and they kind of went back, they wouldn't have to be ready, after they got done there, they're like, there was this, you know, place where you need to be ready, but not talk to me, just give me the board to sign off.
Want me to read it?
Bridge is already good, if you would check that for me, just give me the board to sign off, I don't think you can change it.
Most of my job all the second year except the D.B., and both last, then Dean Scott.
Greg Bruce, Nick Davis, Daniel Heer, TBS, Mark Evans, Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Hiddinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trenton.
Yes. Thanks for that.
Yes.
Next is a four-ten-nine-one-one board call, Anthony.
Ms. Theda, you still here? So, Ms. Theda had contacted me in regards, we had passing of a board member, many years of experience, Bruce Whitworth, um, with the passing of Mr. Whitworth, I could have the authority to appoint somebody to serve on the nine-one-one duty, and in the letter that I sent to you, um, it says, your co-county executive, county commissioners, co-county nine-one-one emergency communication district, involves one of our nine-one-one board members, Bruce Whitworth, a charter member. He also worked in all public aspects and safety over the years, a terrible loss to the people of Coe County, his experience and expertise will be missed. We are requesting that county executive appoint someone to fill Bruce's, Bruce Whitworth's term, which expires March first, twenty twenty-five, and, and present the appointment with the county commission. As I remember in the last one we had, there was a gentleman by the name of Aaron Booth. Aaron's had come by the office, I think everybody on the commission knows Aaron's worked with DDC. I was nine-one-one board meeting last Friday, if I'm not mistaken, and David asked if the commission allowed me to appoint Aaron to serve as a remainder of Mr. Whitworth's term. You need a commission for us to do that, just as long as you all can accept it. I can appoint him, it's just my recommendation to you all, that's who I am, I'm appointing Aaron to serve as a remainder of Bruce's term.
Wait until you're ready. Wait until you're ready, baby.
And the reason why it wasn't in your packet is because the nine-one-one board meeting was Friday, your package went out on this day, but Aaron turned in an application the last week, he had moved it, but this since came by the office and filled out his application.
Motion by Mark, second for James, any more discussion on Aaron Booth? Go guys.
Greg Bruce, Ed, Ken Reel, TBS, Mark Evans, Jeremy Kinsey, Samantha Trenton.
All right, now, we'll get back to the, uh, we've got the agenda done, I know everybody's real passionate about this, things be very one-sided, uh, I'm glad everybody showed up to do, where they kept ten, bite ten minutes tonight too, so, we'll answer questions, can we make two, let's go.
I'll make a statement about that. I worked over fourteen years. Ever since about a year two thousand. I have, I have brought my own town. Well, I get aggravated, keep, keep up with it. But ever since about two thousand, we've had these people come in here, just wanna go to these so-called abandoned plants. You know, this place was livelihood for a lot of people that lived here, but it's been polluted since eighteen hundreds, when they started the copper mining. But people fed up with it because that was their living. Then people like Glenn Marsh, Michael Sheatt, wanted to come here and make a garbage dump out of it, I was in those meetings. I think you were too.
Yep, I was there.
Because they didn't care about this place, they were here wanting to make money. So, it was the Alabama game, is what I called it, and still are. So, we got them out of here, and this ground here is hollow as, as a gorge, everybody knows that, full of water, hollow as a gorge, because of the heavy mining, copper mining, making acid, and we had one former county executive to say if they declared this a real superfund site over here, they put a black eye on the county. Well, you know what a product that went from over here, the oleum, the SO thirty and all that, well, I helped make it. And during the wars, the government come in and he's run this plant, one of them, World War Two, I guess. They shipped this stuff to what is called Volunteer Ammonition Plant or Tyner in Chattanooga, that made dynamite, clothing, and bombs. What Tyner did, they got a su, a real superfund site cleaned up by the government, and a Volkswagen plant, a real city down there around that place, if you go into it. What we get over here, a pile of crap. That's the way I feel about it. I've been living it all my life. And it's a shame that somebody thought it'd give us a black eye, when we got to have a whole lot more, because it all came from here. They got to be there to be a plant, we got nothing. I'd like to know what's gonna happen when this goes wrong over here, and it starts seeping and everything. The wildlife carrying it over, just like she said, birds, they love it, coyotes, they'll jump the fence, don't think they won't, deer will be trapping in it, they jump the fence, everything in the world. And then I know what's gonna happen. When it starts getting in the ground, it will get out, it'll seep in the ground. Put poop runs down, you don't catch poop on the road. It'll be in the river, it'll be in Benton, it'll be in the old Coey, it'll be in the high wassies, it'll be in the Tennessee, right on. There's money in it for somebody, it ain't the people up here, I'll tell you that now. I don't know why we can't have something here besides something like this. I just wanna make that statement.
Good evening, my name is Mark Heinz, I'm with the City of Chattanooga, and, um, there's a comment about we're very quiet over here, and that's because this, this is your meeting, it's not, it's not our meeting, we wanna hear from everybody what's going on out here. So, our product is, is tested extensively, if we get a bad reading, it goes to the landfill, we don't, we don't take it to anybody's site. We have a hundred and eighty-five agricultural sites that we distribute the biosolids to, and another thing is, there's, there is no crap in biosolids, it's long gone, that stuff is at the head of the plant, and it's gone by the time the biosolids are there, so, there's no more crap in biosolids as there is manure in the mirror corn, it's been processed several times by the time it gets to biosolids, so, we're not putting that on, on the field surface. And we don't even make enough to, to spread around everybody, we've got a waiting list, so, we had eleven thousand tons in the last year, we can't do much more, just because we don't have enough product, we don't even make as much as they could use for, for their permits, so we, we can't just be piling it onto their site, it's just not, it's not feasible, the material's not even there, so.
You start taking, pay, they'll ship you all you can give, don't you worry.
We've got a lot of people that want it, that are closer to us too, so we, we pay for it, we, we don't pay a cent to them to take it. We've got people who, who are asking for it and on a waiting list, and so we have to share it around, we can't give it all to one place.
You know, this world's slowly killing itself, and it got enough sense to throw it. You spray, it's like that right there, poisoning, chemicals. You know that stuff's got twenty-five percent lead in it? Have you read the analysis?
Every wastewater product is different, you can't say that about each one, they're all different.
It's in your paperwork.
It's not twenty-five percent lead, it's.
It said twenty-five percent lead, it did not say parts per million, it said twenty-five percent lead.
I think I'm gonna argue, the ECA would.
That is right here, I'm looking at it.
The ECA would now wild it, what you're saying, it's not.
Parts per billion, sir.
Parts per million, it's not.
What's that?
Sir, I have a question for you.
Yes, go ahead.
If you're shipping us class B material, and he's gonna be a hero, because farmers can't get this stuff, right? So he has to create a business to create ten jobs, to create this class A, what is the difference between what you're shipping us in class A? If it's not turds anymore, out of your old mouth.
Right.
Okay, has no smell, no nothing.
I didn't say it has no smell, if it's, if it's left alone, if it's handled improperly, if it's, uh, if it's, if it's, you know, managed improperly on a site, it can become, you know, it could become a problem, because it, it could regrow bacteria or something like that, something could get in there and, and become a problem.
And you can't get the firm should have resigned with it.
It's safe as we apply it, so.
You check every single truck. All raised. Problems, what you're gonna say, there is a possibility.
If it's mishandled, so we've been, we've been bringing.
There's no assurance, there won't be problems down the road, I think it's everybody's issue.
Well, that, well, that's our problem too, because we get, we get an odor complaint, we come back out and we say, what are you doing wrong? You're not supposed to be doing this, this, or this, we, we can't have that, because it's, it's our liability too, if they're mishandling it, so we gloss it in the low.
Sir, one more question. You've been doing this on a very small scale since two thousand nineteen.
That's right.
I'm your neighbor, I could throw a rock really hard and hit your front door. I have been thinking for the last several years, I've lived here since two thousand fifteen, that somebody's septic tank has gone horribly wrong, okay? And it is disgusting, it's not just the septic tank smell, it's a rotten flesh on top of septic tank smell. Okay? I own my house, I do not own a business here, so I, I think tourism's great, but I wanna raise my three children here and be comfortable sitting out on my porch, and my children playing, drinking my coffee or drinking a glass of wine, and you can't do it when that smell comes in, because it tastes like what you're smelling, and it's not being constant, but boy, does it happen on a regular basis. Buddy over here says he can assure us that he's going to control that odor, boy, it's not gonna leave that property. Well, you already failed, buddy, on a very small scope, and so what you were telling us Saturday is if you get this permit, there is no limits, and then you will continue to do this till, and I quote, "hell freezes over."
I did not say that.
You did, sir, I have it recorded on my phone, I recorded the whole, the whole. Well, I'm, I have it on my phone, if you'd like me to send it to you.
Been recorded.
I, uh, recorded on my phone. I'd have to go through two hours, but I will bring it up to my screen.
What I'm gonna do is, uh, and usually typically in September, everything happens in Benton, but we are gonna have a building grounds committee up here in September, uh, usually September thirteenth, and I'll contact more, and I'm not taking sides, but, to me, I want some independent professionals, and I'm not. and I'm not doubting what y'all are saying, but the common denominator is it seems like everybody that's for this has something to gain financially. Hold on, I'm gonna blow service, most of us.
There's not any economic gains or, or from these.
Then why do I do it?
You really, you really said that out loud?
Over and over again, but he acts like.
No economic gain.
We don't have any top.
We're looking at a charity organization.
One time.
All right, next, what we're gonna do, we're gonna generally, June, June, September 13th, I'm sorry, Wyatt Fair Community Center and I'm gonna invite some more people with qualifications to give a benefit, you know, keep it based on size. So everybody that's interested will have a key at Salem Park, Fair Community Center, September 13th.
People who'd like to ask questions, they're welcome to send them to us and we provide all the information, all the data, whatever we have, we'd be happy to provide.